It's a little past ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Let the record show that we do have forum, everyone being present. I'd like to thank everyone and welcome you to the meeting, and thank you all for being here. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
First item is claims. Who's got them or they are?
Moved to second.
Moved to second, discussion. Honorable people, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Before we start with our reports, if anyone is from out of town and they want to go before our meetings, Gus, you want to... What item number are you?
Item 11.
Let's go to item 10. This is an action item on tax resale bids received on properties.
That is correct, Judge. Good morning, gentlemen. We had a tax resale, which means these properties have been... We tried to sell them before and haven't gotten a bid, or one that's respectable enough. We had fifty-four in total. If you look at your packet, the bids are usually what they are, not full amounts, sometimes maybe half amount. A couple of here, I just want to point out to this court. If you turn to the third page, where you see TS-08145, those are a lot of lots that sold for $1,200. Now, we couldn't get to these lots. They seem to be inaccessible. They're in Los Olmos subdivision.
Where is that in the packet?
It's a...
What is it?
On the San Los... The list?
It's the second page of the...
It's the second page, yeah. I don't know if this court could shed more light on how the subdivision is created, but we couldn't get to it.
You know what? I don't think the Commissioners have the bid.
No? What is your... Okay, those lots are sold for how much?
Legal description?
For all these lots, lots 1 through 13, and lots 1 through 6, block 11 and block 9, are sold.
Los Olmos?
Sold for $1,200. So low bid.
Los Olmos addition.
It's a... What was Los Olmos addition?
Behind a rail motors. There were actually some lots, I think, that had... I don't know if they had been condemned, but the...
The flooding. Their flood zone.
But I'm not sure those are the lots, but I think...
Are you sure? Remember, a while back ago, there was apparently a subdivision... Apparently, a lot that had never been developed at one time. They were never developed. It was just a brush up there. We're not talking about those same lots?
We couldn't get to them. We didn't see the lots.
Because I think we rescinded that subdivision back at one time, remember when I was the Commissioner there? Because when they were constructed, it wasn't a plant that was filing 56 or something like that. They never was constructed. And I don't know, but you haven't been able to locate them?
No, not... Could not have.
So, did you find the subdivision itself?
A lot of maps, yes, that we did.
You did?
Tabo, is it the one that backed up the whole rail motors? Not that Garza Salinas subdivision?
Yeah, what's that?
The arroyo, the one, they condemned that.
Here's some maps we got.
How about the rest of them? Have they ever been sold?
This is a big one. You can sell it.
Not until, I mean, oh...
And they sold it for 600 bucks.
Panorte or Patra?
So, I don't know how you can... I'm not saying you're landlocked, I'm just saying we couldn't access it.
Why don't we reject them this time and see where they're at?
I think that's the best thing to do, because it's very low.
Yeah, that is very...
And I've noticed on most, if not all, the bid amount versus the opening bid...
Is he right?
The opening bid is what is owed in taxes.
How much was owed?
Fifty-three thousand, change. Fifty-three thousand and change, the bid 600. There's a couple of items in here. But on that same page, I want to point out also, if you go down to the bottom, TS-1064, this is that lot that sits...
Ten what?
TS-1064.
Sixty-four?
The bottom of that same page?
Yes.
Remember, this is the lot, or rather, there's a house that sits on two lots, and we've come here before, twice before, and the bid is now 6,000. It was bid by the same individual, which is less than what he bid the last time, so...
And it's a house there worth more than that, about $60,000?
The problem, I think, is that these two accounts are appraised wrong. Like, this lot should be assessing the house, but here it's just being assessed the little piece of... Half the house and the yard. So, there's a definite appraisal issue here.
I think we ought to reject that. We need to publicize it so people can know where it is, you know? Because a lot of people don't know these things are up for sale.
Yeah.
Because that house there is worth more money. And even though there's an encroachment on it, there's nothing they can do. See, because I understand the guy bought a lot for $8,000.
Yes.
But the house is sitting on part of that lot. Well, there's nothing he can do, because the other lot, even though they built it on that, it's encroaching, but he ain't got no right to do. He can't do it without the house.
When he bought it, the encroachment was already in place?
Yeah.
On the Chaparral.
See, and you know, what he has to learn or understand, that he's got to live about 10 feet from the existing house, and it goes to the lot where the house is. Because it happened to my family, too. Because they were encroaching in a lot, and they had to give them 10 feet from the existing line of the house, too. Because he went down further... He went to buy the house and the lot for $6,000. The house was worth about 50 or 60.
I think it's like 50.
And it's about $70,000 owed in taxes. But I think we ought to reject it, too, and put it outside. Let the people know, put signs up there. Somebody go bid on it.
Absolutely. And also, I think, at some point, these two accounts need to be combined and be one account.
Okay.
But the other lots, I know there are some that were not... You know, there's some with low bids. This court can approve them or deny them, but, you know, it's always... The advantage of approving a low bid is that it gets put back on a tax row, starts getting assessed again.
And those lots, which are those lots?
There are some in here. Commissioner?
Why don't you... You know, I agree with Commissioner Gara, so we should table it.
Okay.
Give us time to look at them, rather than make a hasty decision right now, and then regret it later.
Sure.
We have a meeting in two weeks. By that time, we can review...
We need to know where they're at, you know?
I'll be here.
And then we can make... As to which ones we go ahead and approve and which ones we don't.
How many are those lots, Gus? Cuantos son?
In total, it's on 54.
Fifty-four lots?
Yeah.
En donde están allá?
And all over the county. I'm going to leave you my packet.
Well, they do have it in their packets.
Yeah. Si todos estos, no tenemos ese.
We don't have a...
We've got photos and maps.
We only have this, better.
Well, you know, I've got a packet out. I'll have some...
Maps or anything, we don't have anything.
You want to... You want to give it to me?
If he don't see it on San Los, we'll take whatever he has, but I mean, can I just go there?
So they can take before we leave. Okay, is there a motion to table?
I just...
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable people, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
And if you can, I'll go with table number 11.
I'm sorry?
Also, number 11.
Is there a motion to table number 11?
I just...
Moved in second, discussion. Honorable people, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge. May I make a few?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Judge. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself for the camera, for the audience.
My name is Orlando Quintanilla. I work for Valley Telephone Cooperative for the...
Do you know what item number you're...
Get them asked.
Number 12.
Number 12, okay.
Yes.
Okay, let's go to item 12. It's an action item to approve a permit from Valley Telephone Co-op to bore a copper line under La Morita Road.
Did you notify the rest of the utilities?
We did, yes. We called in a DICTAS 811 notification.
That is in my precinct. I would appreciate if you would notify me, because I wasn't aware of this, unless you called the office, and I wasn't there.
Right, yeah. Well, we... I'm not sure if we had... There was another group that handled the permit itself, but what we'll do in the future...
Did they make the application with you?
They made the application, yes.
They should have.
It's on the packet, the application. And it says a telephone line.
Yes.
And it says that in case there are any damages when you cross it, you are responsible.
Yes. Yes, so what we're going to do is...
So, will you make the motion to...
I'll make the motion to accept the board.
Move in second to approve, discussion. Honorable people, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Anyone else? If not, we'll go back to our regular agenda, under reports. First one is the gas. You don't have a...
Is everything going on in order, Mr. Alvarado? Well, I always just come by before to the podium and just tell what's going on. We don't have to be looking around for...
No, no, no. But when we change, you know... Yeah, you report, but no advice, it's just report.
No más. One time.
Do you have any questions?
Anything going on unusual, or that we need to know?
It's on your report, and the biggest...
Yeah, but you need to tell, you know? Okay. Because we don't have a chance to read it.
The biggest point on it is that we're going cashless transactions now. We've had a deadline of April 1st, but I want to take... I instructed my secretaries, because the older citizens are going to have a hard time with it. We're going to take that first payment this month, cash if they're there, without their money order or whatever.
So, you're going to go cash?
We're not going to accept cash at the office anymore. You've got to come and pay with credit card, check, or money orders. Or cashier's check. Cashier's check.
You know, how about those people, the senior citizens, that don't have that?
That's why I'm taking baby steps, because we're going to train them to come in. It's because, you know, we... They got audited, and that's one of the recommendations that came in. I don't think that's been given to us, but, you know, rather than wait until they come in, we decided to go ahead and... Cash always has a way of getting us involved. I think it's a good step. Most of the other offices are going that way, so I feel it'd be a good move for us.
I think they just have to adjust to it.
Do what?
They'll have to adjust to it.
Yeah. Yeah, I know what the planning, you know, at the beginning, a few came, and they were not happy campers, but now...
They'll get used to it.
It's just a process, yeah. It's just a process. They'll learn.
Takes a little time, but they get used to it.
Thank you. Thank you. Transfer station?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. The report is before you. If you have any questions, let me know. And as far as what's going on with the transfer station, last Commissioners' Court meeting, I think two of the Commissioners were not here when I reported that TCEQ had ceased all acceptance of tires, so we had to close the acceptance of tires at the transfer station. We had a teleconference with TCEQ last week, on Tuesday, and they advised us to keep it closed, but that we could reopen if we had a justifiable request. And the judge sent them a letter stating that one of our biggest problems is the illegal tire dumping in our county, and that we would be having... Month of April is Earth Day, I think the latter part of the month, and I know that the county is going to be having numerous events due to promoting Earth Day. And that was actually the key to TCEQ letting us reopen on a temporary basis. So, as of Friday, the 1st, they will let us have the acceptance of tires reopened for a month. But in the meantime, we're going to be working on the permit to accept the tires on a long time-term basis. Any questions from anyone?
Yeah, I just want to point out that the city's now taking their garbage to the transfer station, and that has really helped out a lot. If you notice, I think this is one of the first times that we end up in the black. It's not much, but we are in the black, and if we take the money that was used for our tires, the precinct tires, and the precinct garbage, we would have ended up in the black over $10,000, almost $70,000.
That is correct.
So, I think that is...
Right, now, let me ask you one question. I don't know if it... But I'm sure you're at your department. Have you ever reconciled the tonnage that goes into the transportation?
Yes, sir.
And what goes out?
Yes, sir.
Does it matches?
It does match. The reason that the reports in the past showed what it showed, Commissioner, was because our bookkeeper was not putting what the Commissioners bring in, and that's why it wouldn't reconcile. So, I told her, you need to...
But nowadays, it's reconciling.
Yes.
What you pay out to... What you pay out to be disposed of in the landfill and edible, what you're paying Patricio, and what you guys collect, totals up to the same amount?
Yes. It's... Sometimes it's off by a few dollars, because the scales here and the scales over there could be off just by a little bit, but, yes, we are reconciling.
Okay, that's it.
Any other question? Thank you, Judge. The Treasurer, Mr. Peña?
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm going to go ahead and read the report for Mr. Peña. Number one, general fund, as of February 29, 2016, general fund had 1.6 million, less than the 5.3 million at the same time last year. The very low balance was due to three main reasons: 2014 budget crisis, loan payment, lower amortized collection of eight-liner fees, and the ongoing tax office piasco. Additionally, there were several hundred thousand dollars worth in pending checks for approved claims and upcoming payroll. $450,000 would be needed in two days for payroll. Number two, Roden Bridge Fund, as of February 29, the Roden Bridge Fund had 1.3 million or $100,000 more than the $1.2 million at the same time last year. Number three, total cash, the total amount of cash in bank and investment accounts in the custody of the county treasurer as of the end of the period covered by this report was 12.3 million. This overall amount is 4.2 million less than the amount of 16.6 million at the time... At the same time last year. Number four, we are still waiting for a solution to the bank, to the bank, to the general ledger reconciliation issued dating back as far as the information is available. In fact, there are only three officials responsible for the reconciliation of depository accounts, and attorney must provide under the code... It's provided under the code of criminal procedures to a county official may for certain agency accounts, and three, the county treasurer shall for most of the accounts, including for those agency accounts where the county official chooses not to, or if the official fails to do the reconciliations. This is a very serious matter. Number five, account monitoring. We continue to monitor our depository account balances and activities on a daily basis for fraud. Number six, total debt for the county as of February 29, 2016, was 2.6 million. Total debt was substantially reduced because the solid waste loan was paid off by someone unknown to the county treasurer's office. Neither the proceeds nor the documents from the new uninsured cash flow was obtained on February 28 have been presented to the treasurer's office. Issue number seven, on January 15, we notified grand garbage, the county attorney and the county auditor, that there may be issued with grand garbage payment without an approved court claim, and that the contract appeared to be expired. On February 21, we notified the county attorney, the Commissioners' Court, the county auditor, and Mr. Patricio Hernandez that Mr. Peña would not be signing a check to grant garbage in the amount of $86,977.90 from the Star County Solid Waste Transfer Station because the legality was doubted. I hereby again report this matter to the Commissioners' Court for court's consideration and direction. As I hereby inform the court that if the court orders the check to be signed, I require that the claim supporting the order be made available and verified by an affidavit after the claim is approved for payment by the Commissioners' Court in accordance with the local government code 113.041D. Number eight, intergovernmental loans. The Commissioners' Court is approving loans out of the general fund to other county funds and both the county auditor, and I believe that there is not enough money to lend out. The practice of court approving disbursements without having the funds available, subject to availability of funds, should be reviewed by the county attorney, as it is the duty of the county auditor to recommend a disbursement only if the funds are available already. Number nine, disbursements without court approval. For longest I have been in office, I have objected to signing checks for disbursements to open purchase orders, also known as ongoing POs. In my examination, the ongoing PO has been found to be disbursements for a contract that had expired over one year ago. Furthermore, in the recent past, a series of bills were found to be paid to two vendors for the same service starting May 1st. I will no longer be signing checks that are approved by the county auditor, but do not have a court-approved claim on file at the county clerk's office. It is my understanding that the court may pre-authorize the treasurer to disburse funds for utility bills prior to the filing of a claim, but a list of approved accounts and their respective vendors need to be approved by the court and needs to be on file. I have submitted a proposed resolution for your review and consideration. Number 10, pledge collateral. The county's amounts in deposits are properly collateralized in accordance with a pledge report from Lonestar National Bank. And if there's any questions, Mr. Peña would be glad to answer.
Yeah, I just have a comment. You know, I don't know how else to say it, but I find it insulting that you all have to read everything. We can read. We can read. You know, you all don't have to read it. All we're looking for, you know, and we waste five minutes, all we're looking for is a report on the numbers. That's all we need.
Judge, if I may, I have an answer to your first question. Commissioner Gara said in his prior report that even though he had submitted in writing, he would like to hear it read, and if it's okay with the Commission?
Is that so, Commissioner?
Yeah, but you don't have to go through this, you know, all this process, you know?
Yeah, it's just a waste of...
You know, I...
It's up to you how you want.
You know, I mean, all we need to know, in my opinion, and I had requested, I need to know, if there's a problem, I need to know. If we don't have money, I need to know. If we got money, that's all I need to know. The rest is everybody's responsibility to take care of business. And like I said, yes, but we don't have to go through all these extents, you know? We like to know, we have money, we don't have money, we're short, we're falling short. That's my main concern. I need to know what's going... That we don't have money, do we have? Right now, we haven't paid JNF for what reason? That's what my concern is. That's it, you know? We don't not pay them because we don't have money, or you... Or the auditors don't want to pay, or you don't want to pay. That's what we need to know.
Under very normal circumstances, the report would not take longer than a minute.
Yeah, and that's what we're looking for, because a lot of this...
There's an eye on the report, and it is not my fault that there's 10 issues right now that are floating on the floor.
Yeah, but those 10 issues are in your mind, in your mind, but they're really not Commissioners' issues.
And like I said, I like to see it, to ask questions. Everything's going on fine, you know?
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner. For example, item number six, total debt was substantially reduced by the... Because a solid waste loan was paid off by someone unknown to the county treasurer. We discussed it here three times about paying it off.
Will you approve this?
So, how do you know, why you'd say, you know? A lot of this stuff, it just falls just to make the county look bad, and I take issue with that, you know? I guarantee you that a lot of these problems, if they were problems, Ms. Guerra would have already told me, because it's her job to audit, not yours, Commissioner. In fact, that's what I just passed around, the duties of the treasurer. His job is to receive monies that should be deposited to the court, and I'm being just in a nutshell, but you all have it there, so you can read, "to disperse and to pay as the Commissioners' Court may require or direct." The treasurer's doubt of legality or preparity of order presented to the treasurer for payment, the treasurer may not make payment. However, once the court... I'm speaking, sir. I'm speaking. However, you know, once it goes back to the court, the court can direct him to pay with an affidavit, and Ms. Perez is working the affidavit right now for Pat's Atlanta Spain. In the county, where county... Where a county has an auditor, the county treasurer may not make a payment if the treasurer has reason to believe, but that's only where we don't have an auditor. The auditor is responsible to keep us all in line, not the treasurer. And I can go on and on with different things. For example, the audit, no authority whatsoever to do audits, and I want this to be of record, okay? Because I've gotten several letters of people complaining that you're going out there and questioning what they're doing, how they're doing, and stuff like that. That's not your job, and they feel that they're being harassed. If that continues, I guarantee you, you and I will get sued, because you're operating outside your authority. And if I'm wrong, we have legal counsel here, they can advise us. But anyhow, you know, I'm putting you on notice that what you're doing is not legal. It is outside your rim of authority. Any other thing? Next report?
Honorable...
Federal and state programs?
I'm going to go over the GLA real quick. We have agreed... We are working with Attorney Lori Perez for the condemnation paperwork for the Los Morenos project. We have between 16 and 18 parcels that she's going to be assisting us on. We did speak with Lori last week, and we gave her all the information that she needed.
How many parcels are we...
Between 16 and 18.
I didn't hear you.
Between 16 and 18.
That need to be condemned?
Yes.
We started out with four, now we're at 16?
And now, nobody wants to vote, nobody is willing to. They're giving up their...
And why would that be so? Who's influencing? Mr. Peña?
I don't know, Commissioner. So, but we are working...
What are right, Tammy?
But we are working...
No, you might not. You might not.
And attorney must provide, under the code, is provided under the code of criminal procedures to a county official may for certain agency accounts. And three, the county treasurer shall fill most of the accounts, including for those agency accounts where the county official chooses not to, or if the official fails to do the reconciliations. This is a very serious matter. Number five, account monitoring. We continue to monitor our depository account balances and activities on a daily basis for fraud. Number six, total debt for the county as of February 29, 2016 was 2.6 million. Total debt was substantially reduced because the solid waste loan was paid off by someone unknown to the county treasurer's office. Neither the proceeds nor the documents from the new uninsured, uninsured cash flow was obtained on February 28 have been presented to the treasurer's office. Issue number seven, on January 15, we notified Grand Garbage, the county attorney and the county auditor that there may be issued with Grand Garbage payment without an approved court claim and that the contract appeared to be expired. On February 21, we notified the county attorney, the commissioners' court, the county auditor, and Mr. Patricio Hernandez that Mr. Peña would not be signing a check to Grand Garbage in the amount of $86,977.90 from the Starr County Solid Waste Transfer Station because the legality was doubted. I hereby again report this matter to the commissioners' court for court's consideration and direction. As I hereby inform the court that if the court orders the check to be signed, I require that the claim supporting the order be made available and verified by an affidavit after the claim is approved for payment by the commissioners' court in accordance with the local government code 113.041D. Number eight, intergovernmental loans. The commissioners' court is approving loans out of the general fund to other county funds and both the county auditor, and I believe that there is not enough money to lend out. The practice of court approving disbursements without having the funds available, subject to availability of funds should be reviewed by the county attorney as it is the duty of the county auditor to recommend a disbursement only if the funds are available already. Number nine, disbursements without court approval. For long as I have been in office, I have objected to signing checks for disbursements to open purchase orders, also known as ongoing POs. In my examination, the ongoing PO has been found to be disbursements for a contract that had expired over one year ago. Furthermore, in the recent past, a series of bills were found to be paid to two vendors for the same service starting May 1. I will no longer be signing checks that are approved by the county auditor but do not have a court-approved claim on file at the county clerk's office. It is my understanding that the court may pre-authorize the treasurer to disburse funds for utility bills prior to the filing of a claim, but a list of approved accounts and their respective vendors need to be approved by the court and needs to be on file. I have submitted a proposed resolution for your review and consideration. Number 10, pledge collateral. The county's amounts in deposits are properly collateralized in accordance with a pledge report from Lonestar National Bank. And if there's any questions, Mr. Peña would be glad to answer.
Yeah, I just have a comment. You know, I don't know how else to say it, but I find it insulting that y'all have to read everything. We can read. We can read. You know, y'all don't have to read it. All we're looking for, you know, and we waste five minutes, all we're looking for is a report on the numbers. That's all we need.
Judge, if I may, I have an answer to your first question. Commissioner Nasa replied to the previous report that even though he had submitted a write-in, he would like to hear it read. And if it's okay with the commission?
Is that so, Commissioner?
Yeah, but you don't have to go through this, you know, all this process, you know.
Yeah, it's a waste of work.
You know, I, I, you know.
It's up to you how you want.
You know, I mean, all we need to know, in my opinion, and I had requested, I need to know, if there's a problem, I need to know. If we don't have money, I need to know. If we got money, that's all I need to know. The rest is everybody's responsibility to take care of business. And like I said, yes, but we don't have to go through all these extents, you know. We like to know if we have money, if we don't have money, we're short, we're falling short. That's my main concern. I need to know what's, that we don't have money, do we have? Right now, we haven't paid JNF for what reason? That's what my concern is. That's it. You know, we don't not pay them because we don't have money, or you, or the auditor don't want to pay, or you don't want to pay. That's what we need to know.
Under very normal circumstances, the report would not take longer than a minute.
Yeah, and that's what we're looking for, because a lot of this-
There's anitis on the report, and it is not my fault that there's 10 issues right now that are floating on the floor.
Yeah, but those 10 issues are in your mind, in your mind, but they're really not commissioners' issues.
And like I said, I like to see it, to ask questions. Everything's going on fine, you know.
Yeah, Commissioner, Commissioner. For example, item number six, total debt was substantially reduced by the, because the solid waste loan was paid off by someone unknown to the county treasurer. We discussed it here three times about paying it off. So how do you know why you'd say, you know, a lot of this stuff, it just falls just to make the county look bad, and I take issue with that. You know, I guarantee you that a lot of these problems, if they were problems, Ms. Guerra would have already told me, because it's her job to audit, not yours, Commissioner. In fact, that's what I just passed around. The duties of the treasurer, his job is to receive monies that should be deposited to the court, and I'm being just in a nutshell, but y'all have it there so you can read, to disperse and to pay as the commissioners' court may require or direct. The treasurer's doubt of legality or preparity of order presented to the treasurer for payment, the treasurer may not make payment. However, once the court- I'm speaking, sir. I'm speaking. However, you know, once it goes back to the court, the court can direct him to pay with an affidavit. And Ms. Perez is working the affidavit right now for Pat's, Atlanta's pain. In the county, where county, where a county has an auditor, the county treasurer may, may not make a payment if the treasurer has reason to believe, but that's only where we don't have an auditor. The auditor is responsible to keep us all in line, not the treasurer. And I can go on and on with different things. For example, the audit, no, no, not, no authority whatsoever to do audits. And I want this to be of record, okay, because I've gotten several letters of people complaining that you're going out there and questioning what they're doing, how they're doing, and stuff like that. That's not your job, and they feel that they're being harassed. If that continues, I guarantee you, you and I will get sued because you're operating outside your authority. And if I'm wrong, we have legal counsel here, they can advise us. But anyhow, you know, I'm putting you on notice that what you're doing is not legal. It is outside your rim of authority. Any other thing?
No.
Next report?
I want to read.
Federal and state programs?
I'm going to go over the GLO real quick. We have agreed, we are working with attorney Lori Perez for the condemnation paperwork for the Los Morenos project. We have between 16 and 18 parcels that she's going to be assisting us on. We did speak with Lori last week, and we gave her all the information that she needed.
Well, how many parcels are we?
Between 16 and 18.
I didn't hear you.
Between 16 and 18.
That need to be condemned?
Yes.
We started out with four, now we're at 16?
And now nobody wants to vote, nobody is willing to. They're giving up their-
And why would that be so? Who's influencing? Mr. Peña?
I don't know, Commissioner. So, but we are working, but we are working-
No, you might not. You might not.
Go ahead and finish your-
Okay, we are working with Lori, and she's assisting us on that for the Los Morenos project. For the search project, we've already completed pipeline, Chapeno Road have already been completed, and we are working on Mike's subdivision. It's under construction right now. For the NRCS USDA, we are, we are at 40% complete already, and we are a month ahead of schedule. For the housing, we have already submitted approval for four homes. We're just waiting on your approval. If there was any errors or anything that needs, oh, that needs to be completed, we're just waiting on the response from them as of two weeks.
From the state?
That is correct.
But the application is?
That is correct. As of two weeks, we have, we haven't had any response, so it looks like we're doing good on that. For the Tech Top 53 program, we've already submitted the application for a new Type 2 vehicle, and that vehicle will be for Commissioner Cantus precincts. And then just a reminder, commissioners, for the all three 5310 vehicles, that the oil changes need to be completed every 3,000 miles. And just another reminder that on this Thursday, we do have the training in Laredo for the nutrition site managers.
How about Efren Ramírez?
That's going to be after Mike's subdivision. Once Mike's subdivision's completed, we will move on to Efren Ramírez, and that is the last one that's on the priority list.
Because we might have to change order there.
Okay, and that's fine. Okay?
Yeah.
Are you going to go ahead and add, Commissioner? You're going to go ahead and add more, more paving? Is that the change?
No, no, no. We're going to cut some paving.
Okay, okay. Perfect. Then the engineer should work on that.
Yeah, I think he is already.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Under my report-
Hello, Lori, on this condemnation.
Yes, sir.
More or less, what the status?
I just received all of the files this past week, so I'm reviewing those so we can get petitions ready and get them filed.
Okay. Do we need to expedite it?
Yes, sir.
Under my report, just want to let the commissioners' court know that Dr. Falcone called me this morning and asked that I invite you on his behalf on the 31st, is when they have the ribbon cutting on the DPS building, and he's going to have a little get-together afterwards at his home, so the court is invited if y'all could go. And that's all I have.
What time is he going to be here?
You remember, what time, what time the ribbon cutting?
No.
Hold on, I'll get it here.
He told me, but I forgot. I thought he was going to be in the afternoon.
It's going to be at 10 o'clock in the morning. Okay, item five is an action item, and this is the hiring of the vocational nurse for the detention center to provide medical service for adult and juvenile. Is there a Lisa here?
Here, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Judge, actually, item number five and number six-
Five and six. Can we take them both together?
Yes, I'd like. Commissioner, Judge, what this is, for many years now, Dr. Falcone and some of his associates have provided medical attention to the inmates needed at the county jail. Routine medical exams, if, checking for TB testing, so on, so forth, to make sure that our facilities are not contaminated. In that time, we have also had a very robust juvenile program downstairs with the juvenile detention center, and on occasion, they have been able to assist if need be, if the juvenile detention is in dire needs, but for the most part, juvenile detention has to transport juveniles out to doctor's offices to have them checked out for routine medical issues. What has, in evaluating the situation, what the departments, both the county sheriff's office and the juvenile detention center would like to do is to have number five and number six approved. Essentially, what it is, is reducing the amount of money paid to Dr. Falcone by approximately $37,000 with his consent. We have discussed this at length with him, in order to use that money to hire a LVN, a nurse, which is already being paid by Dr. Falcone at the moment. She would not be paid by Dr. Falcone any longer, it would be paid by the county to help assist with these routine medical checks at the county jail, and if need be, here at the juvenile detention center as well. That's part of the services she would be providing. Saving the county monies in the time that a juvenile officer, a detention officer, and the vehicle by the county are taken to the doctor's offices for routine medical checks. We wouldn't have to do that. We spend approximately two to three hours, think of yourselves when you go visit a doctor. You spend two to three hours in the waiting room, and we've got three people with a kid that just has a bloody nose. Those are the kind of situations that we could encounter. In this situation, we'd have an LVN come in from the county jail, which the sheriff would oversee, treat the children, and they, that would all be the only expense, that the expense that we're already paying at this time. So there are no new, no new fees, nothing new to the county, except that we're splitting the purse, giving some of it to a licensed vocational nurse that would be employed by the county and overseen, I believe, by the sheriff's department, is that correct?
Yeah, I already discussed that with Dr. Falcone. He had advised me of this, and he had, he told me he had no problem, so I do some more to our second.
I have motion in second. Yeah, I think it's a win-win for everyone, you know.
And both items?
On item number five and number six.
Yeah, it's a win-win for everybody, because now that the LVN will be stationed here full-time, so it's not like we have to wait until she comes, or so.
Now, with regards, just for clarification purposes on that, on the LVN, because of the odd hours and whatnot, her schedule will be malleable, but she should be working the 40 hours a week for the county.
Yeah. Okay, I do have motion in second, discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge.
Item seven is an action item, is to approve proclamation proclaiming April as child abuse and neglect prevention month. Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Judge and commissioners. We have a proposed proclamation for the month of April. We have several people here from CPS workers and our Child Welfare Board and the county attorney's office who would like to take photos, of course, with you all afterwards. If I may read the proclamation. Whereas in federal fiscal year 2014, the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services confirmed 66,572 cases of child abuse or neglect, including cases in Starr County. And whereas child abuse and neglect is a serious problem affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. And whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of Starr County. And whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that can have lifelong consequences for victims of abuse. And whereas protective factors are conditions that reduce or eliminate risk and promote the social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. Whereas effective child abuse prevention activities succeed because of the meaningful connections and partnerships created between child welfare, education, health, community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, and law enforcement agencies. And whereas communities must make every effort to promote programs and activities that benefit children and their families. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and contribute to promote the social and emotional well-being of children and families in a safe, stable, nurturing environment. Whereas prevention remains the best defense for our children and families. Whereas the impact of abuse and neglect has long-term personal, economic, and social costs, therefore hurting Texas's future. Whereas Starr County, the Child Welfare Board, the Starr County Attorney's Office, Child Protective Services, Child Advocacy Centers, foster parents, teachers, and others work to ensure that children in our community have the opportunity to grow up in safe, loving, permanent homes. Now therefore, I, Eloy Vera, Starr County Judge, do hereby proclaim April 2016 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month in Starr County, Texas, and urge all citizens to recognize this month by dedicating ourselves to the task of improving the quality of life for all children and families.
Thank you, thank you, Lori. And, and I commend you and, of course, the county attorney and his office for the work that you do for the children and the elderly. I think these two sectors are the ones that get forgotten, and I'm glad someone's looking out for them, so commend you for that. Sure.
I do some more, you know?
Second.
Move in second. All unfair, please, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And if we could take a photo with our child welfare board?
We can take it now. Item, item eight is also an action item, and this is to direct the treasurer to pay the outstanding invoice for Grand Garbage. And again, Ms. Perez, you'll have the affidavit.
Yes, sir.
Later, okay. Is there a motion to that?
Also move to pay Grand Garbage.
Is there a second? Move in second, discussion. All unfair, please, aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item nine is also an action, well, it's an action item to approve a resolution authorizing the treasurer to pay for certain claims prior to commissioners' court approval. These claims are such for utilities and stuff that if we don't pay them, then we get billed with late fees and, and possibility of disconnects. So I think it's certainly something we need to do.
Which are those bills?
It's a-
You have a list of them?
That's a decision that the county to make as to what you want to add into credit.
We have to pay them unless they're out of order.
All those bills are approved by Ms. Guerra, and then they're sent to the treasurer.
I don't think we, I don't think there's no doubt that we have to pay them. We don't have to wait. I just want to see the list.
The list is right there. We gave you 10 items or 11.
It's a, there's a list in the back.
And you need to make a decision which ones you want on the list and which ones you don't. And those that you want on the list-
I would recommend that anything Ms. Guerra approves, that we authorize to be paid, you know, because she's the one that knows.
That may not be in compliance with Chapter 113 of the Local Government Code. You cannot give her a blank check.
I think, I think that's a dangerous one.
I'm sorry?
That's a dangerous situation.
Ms. Guerra, can you look at the list and tell us which ones you would like to approve?
What did you talk, Victor, why is it a dangerous situation? Why?
Kind of saying that, that Ms. Guerra obviously will choose to pay, what she pays, what she pays and how she pays.
No, 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 no. We're talking about only utility. We're talking about the utility, I mean, the essential thing, like light, water-
Sure.
Telephone, all that kind of stuff?
Just phrase it. See kind of what I meant.
Okay, so that's why you want to phrase it. Do you have a list there? We'll check.
I know I saw a list somewhere.
We gave you a list on the proposed resolution.
What's the list of the ones that we want to pay?
Item number one, let's go one of them, if you don't mind, we can go through them one by one. Item number one is utilities, power, water, garbage, and natural gas.
Right.
Number two, telephone, digital cell phone, data and internet.
Right.
Debt service, payment for debts, las notas, note payment.
I don't think that one should be there.
No.
I don't think that one should be there.
Well, we've been doing them all along, so if you don't want it on the list, we'll take it out.
Debt service, Ms. Guerra, do we, do we pay debt service without court approval?
No, it's always on the list.
Yeah, I think that one needs to be up.
For all of them, all the notes. I don't-
Not better. We need to prove to-
I can scratch out whatever you want.
Okay.
Scratch that one. I have no objection to scratching, but I do want to know, and I need to know, which ones you want and which ones you don't. Payroll, as long as we have an order of salary.
Exactly.
Okay? Payroll taxes, all payroll taxes.
Yes, yeah.
Employee related expenses are approved with the order of salary.
I'm sorry?
Employee related expenses such as payroll taxes, insurance, the life insurance, all that, workers' comp, it's approved with the order of salary.
Okay, yeah, is that okay?
I believe it will be five, six, and seven. It's five, six, and seven on your list.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
Does everyone have a list?
You know, that's all right. What else? What do you want to say?
Employee travel. That's always on the list.
Which one?
Unless employee travel expense.
Employee travel, that's like a jailer that is going to Dallas to take a prisoner.
Yeah, and some of those is for the sheriff's office when they need to travel.
Right, if it's in advance, then we go ahead, but if it's after the fact, we put it on.
Okay, yeah.
Now, we also made you, like, for example, like, somebody's traveling, and then the hotel didn't get the check, and then they say, we need a replacement check right now.
Yeah, I think the way Ms. Guerra stated it, it's all right.
Like, on the replacement check, it's always been approved, so we go ahead and make the replacement check.
Number 10, food service vendors, los centros. What you buy for los centros and for the jail.
Well, that you can wait. I mean- I can wait. We just-
Okay. When you have checks to, like, the ongoing payments.
Number 11, disbursement of fund-
I thought it was 10.
This one, fund for the rightful fund. In other words, let's say that the, that the bridge receives $3,000 a month rent from somebody. Then Ms. Guerra, we do a transfer of that fund to the, to the rightful fund. Do you want that to go on a pre-basis, or you want after the fact or before the fact?
How could we done that?
Like, the, the state controller will put, will send it to the general fund instead of the correct.
Okay, and we've done, we've done that-
So all I do is I take that money and put it where it belongs, because it was on-
So, so we can leave that one on the list? Okay, okay. Yeah, now going back to ongoing POs, I checked with several people in Austin. Finally, I was able to get with the controller and the person that is responsible for doing that, all that, and he says that as long as it's in our policy, it is perfectly legal to have what they call blanket, we call them ongoing, they call them blanket POs. He said it's perfectly legal, you know, all the counties do it, and I checked with HR, I guess, and it is in policy that we do, so, you know, those, those are legal.
Which ones?
The ongoing POs.
Okay. The PO is one thing, the claim is the other.
No, but she was asking about-
The PO itself is one thing, it's the claim, the one that has the, I have a problem with.
Yeah, she was asking about the POs.
Well, that they, that if you have a PO, but you still don't have a claim, I have to wait for the claim.
If it's an ongoing PO, for example, the electricity, okay, we cannot wait to do a PO and then get it approved, and then get all this stuff done, because then they're going to disconnect this.
We agree.
Those, we have a blanket PO, and the state says that that is perfectly legal.
And that is why we have this resolution. So that we have, so that we can have something in compliance. We're proposing solutions.
Okay, why, I don't see why you say that you have a problem.
Because I don't have a, I don't have a resolution from you. And I cannot go around signing checks to my discretion without your approval.
We're going to pass it, we're going to pass it right now.
That's why we're here.
So what is it that Ms. Guerra is saying that you say you have a problem with?
Absolutely nothing.
Okay.
That's why I brought you this resolution.
Is there, is there a motion to go ahead and approve the list?
Before we close, and I might be out of order in correcting, but going back to the Grande Garbage.
Yeah.
If I understand, we, they, they, the bill was not paid because-
Apparently, we don't have a contract.
We need to get it squared away. Either we have a, go out there or get a contract or fix it, so we don't come with this problem again, to have to give the treasurer and order a directive to pay. So let's get it, either extending, I know that we went on a monthly, monthly basis, and he has to be paid, but we need to extend it for a year or go out of bid.
That's already been resolved. I just need to send it over to Victor for his review, the contract, and then we'll approve it next week if y'all want, I mean, two weeks.
You know, to avoid this controversy.
Commissioner Nasa, the problem that I had with Grande is that you have, you don't have an approved claim for the PO. It has not gone through commissioners' court.
Yes, it did. We approved-
I asked her, there is, it's not there.
We would extend his contract on a month-to-month basis.
On a month-to-month, yes, but you did not bring it into the claim list. It's not in your claim list. If you look at your claim list from there.
It's in an ongoing PO, see that's what-
The PO is fine, but you don't have a claim. You still need a claim.
Like, claim, like, what you're talking about?
Bueno, aita, vamos a pasar la resolución, ¿no? Para que estamos adelantando aquí. Ay, no son buenas. Qué bárbaros.
Move to approve, okay.
Lo que pasa ahorita, los diez mandamientos de-
You move. Move in second. Yes, sir.
Los diez mandamientos que-
One of them.
No.[1779.13] Number three, number one?
Debt service, and you also took out the food service vendors.
Yeah.
So, cuantos, pues, ya los números, just-
They don't claim your power.
You give, give them the numbers, which numbers are they?
Van a ser nueve.
Oye, sé, nueve mandamientos, nocho. Son once.
Okay, I had a motion in second, discussion. All unfair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. See, item thirteen and fourteen are budget amendments, Ms. Guerra, are they in order? Ms. Guerra? Ms. Guerra? Budget, I mean, item thirteen, okay.
Move to pass.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All unfair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Items fifteen and sixteen are donations.
Move to pass.
If I click it.
Moved in second, all unfair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Items fifteen and sixteen are donations.
Move to pass.
If I click it.
Moved in second, all unfair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item seventeen, I'm gonna take those individually, Commissioner.
Okay, item seventeen, I need to clarify something, it says Garza Street and Rafael, bueno, changing from Garza Street to Rafael Reyna, but that is, that in Rio Grande City, for nine-one-one, that's in La Loma.
Yeah, I think what they meant is in the nine-one-one, the, the, okay, is, is that a mo, well-
That's a motion to pass.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All unfair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item eighteen.
Item eighteen, have a request from the community and the ancestors of San Colorado to change it back to San Colorado for nine-one-one purposes from Joseph Lopez, and that is in San Isidro La Gloria area.
Okay.
I move to accept the eighteen.
Moved in second, all unfair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item nineteen is also a budget amendment, Ms. Guerra?
It's in the question.
Moved in second, to approve. All unfair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twenty is an action item, is to hire Gordon McCumber and Cortez for the purpose of the forensic auditing of the chapter fifty-nine funds. They are willing to do it, their prices, I thought were very reasonable, Ms. Guerra, is there anything else you wanna add?
No, Judge, just that they're CPA firm, and they're also certified in doing forensic auditing.
What, what, what's the price, you know?
Were they in the packet? Do you recall?
They say, I don't remember.
Yeah, but it was less than lawyers, I know that. No offense to the lawyers.
They, other than the partner, everything else was reasonable.
But, you don't have a special amount, or is it gonna be an open?
Well, it depends on how much-
On the hours that they put into it.
Yeah, okay.
And who puts it, you know, if it's a clerk, if it's a principal, if it's, you know, it's como los regular.
I know a guy.
Is there a motion?
I don't know. Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All unfair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twenty-one is the order of election. Is there a motion to approve the order of election?
No. No move to approve.
Oh, okay, go, go ahead.
Okay, Roger.
This is for the runoff, Vera?
Yes, sir.
Is this for the early voting, or the, uh?
For both, sir. On the bottom of, it's early voting, May sixteenth through the twentieth, eight to five every day, and then on election day on the twenty-fourth, it'll be from seven to seven.
The nomados casillas.
Yes, sir. Courthouse in La Rosita.
Yeah, I think that's where, where the action will be. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All unfair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twenty-two, Roger, is that, oh, that, that's a, what, we, we did twenty-one and twenty-two, is a motion for both, twenty-one and twenty-two?
Yes.
Is there a second for both?
Yes.
Okay. All unfair, please, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item twenty-three, also an action item, and this to appoint Mr. Jaime Mandonal to replace the border trustees for border region, border is Miss Bell, Reyna, can you correct that?
Who quiere pasar, no?
Behavioral Health Center. It was, the lady that was there was a teacher in Roma, and she just didn't have the time to make it, so I'm nominating Mr. Mandonal, he's willing to go.
Yo pensaba que era la que veía Miss Bell.
Monday?
Yo pensaba que era la que veía Miss Bell.
No, I'm probably more subject to misspelling.
No, no, yo pensaba que era la maestra de la gente, Miss Bell.
Move to appoint Jaime Mandonal.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second, discussion. All unfair, please, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item twenty-four is an action item, is to proclaim April tenth to sixteen as Crime Victims Week, Bernice?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Pretty much, and very similar to the county attorney's office, this month, we take, we, we honor victims, we, you know, we out the awareness against child abuse, that type of stuff, and basically, the crime victims unit for the DA's office is gonna go along with the, you know, the National Crime Victims Week, which is April tenth through the sixteenth, and we have a bunch of activities planned out for our victims, you all will be getting a, a schedule of events in the next couple of days, and the proclamation, I'll read the proclamation. Whereas Americans are the victims of more than two million crimes each year, and crimes can touch the lives of anyone regardless of age, national origin, race, creed, religion, gender, sexual orientation, immigration, or economic status. Where many victims face challenges in finding appropriate services, including victims with disabilities, young victims of color, deaf, and hard-of-hearing victims, tribal victims, elder victims, victims with mental illness, immigrant victims, teen victims, victims with limited English proficiency, and others. Whereas to many communities feel disconnected from the justice and social response system and have lost trust in the ability of those systems to recognize and respond to their needs. Whereas victims of, of repeat victimization who fail to receive supportive services are at greater risk for long, long-term consequences of crime. Whereas the victim services community has worked for decades to create an environment for victims that is safe, supportive, and effective. Whereas intervening early with services that support and empower victims provides a pathway to recover from crime and abuse. Whereas honoring the rights of victims, including the right to be heard and to be treated with fairness, dignity, and respect, and working to meet their needs, rebuild their trust in the criminal justice and social service system. Whereas serving victims and rebuilding their trust restores hope to victims and survivors as well as our communities. Whereas National Crime Victims Week, April tenth through the sixteenth of two thousand sixteen, is an opportune time to commit to ensuring that all victims of crime, even those who are, who are challenging to reach or to serve, are offered culturally and linguistically accessible and appropriate services in the aftermath of a crime. And whereas the county of Starr is hereby dedicated to serving victims, building trust, and restoring hope for justice and healing, now therefore, the Commissioners' Court of the county of Starr do hereby proclaim the week of April tenth through the sixteenth of two thousand sixteen as Crime Victims Week, and reaffirm Starr County's commitment